Good morning. I call to order the June 16, 2020, meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Redrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weas.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask that you please stand to join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the commission? Okay, if you'd step to the podium and give your name and address, please? Yes.
I'm Evelyn Maxwell. I live at 414 East Wayne here in Salina. And I am aware that on April the 7th, you all asked for a special question to be put on the November ballot to have a new jail, and the cost was estimate was there. Those town hall meetings all closed on March the 19th. But on March the 23rd, a 25-page CDC guidance for correctional and detention facilities was posted. And that was in response to medical concerns for spreading illnesses in the facility and, of course, then out into the community. When looking at the internet, at saline.org, where that plan that we were supposed to vote on is shown, it looked like there would need to be several modifications to that plan to meet those guidelines. We could say that the COVID-19 would be over before the construction was completed, but we are assured by the infectious disease experts that these pandemics are occurring more frequently and that there will be more to come. And in addition, we have this annual flu season that sometimes can be quite severe. The Saline County Citizens for Jail Reform has recommended, based on economic restraints, that you postpone the vote. And they also want to expand efforts to reduce the incarceration rates. I agree and add to their concerns this matter of needing to review and revise the building plan to meet these new recommendations by the CDC. Let the engineering firm update its plan and cost estimates to meet the current recommendations, please, and please postpone a vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the commission?
Lauren Naino, Salina, Kansas. It's in the news a lot about this, how we're treating people out on the street. I don't blame all the law enforcement officers. It's some of these officers that you've got in your department. Why are they violating the law and not facing charges? You've got one or two bad apples in every department. We need to get rid of them. And I think most of you commissioners know on this commission where I'm coming from. I'm not going to forget this. This happened five years ago, July the 8th. But you've got one or two officers and they're still on the force. Why aren't they facing charges? When a law enforcement officer can threaten an elected official and not face any charges, that's a double standard. I witnessed this, where a law enforcement officer threatened an elected official. And yet that officer or officers are still employed in our law enforcement department. So we've got a double standard here. I think you need to look at that because this isn't going to go away. We need to reduce our law enforcement because we don't need them. If you read the Constitution, we do not need a law enforcement department. The Second Amendment takes care of that. If you read the Constitution, the Second Amendment, it provides for us.
Thank you.
Lynne Meyer, Salina. I was not planning on speaking, but hearing those comments, I did speak yesterday at the citizen, at the city commission meeting. And one of the things I do want to challenge and encourage with the law enforcement programming, when law enforcement candidates are interviewed, I think it's very important if there is not a part of the interview that addresses their motives for wanting to be a law enforcement officer and what kind of attitudes they will have moving forward, then I think if that's not addressed, that can be a real concern. I personally believe from the work I've done through the years that many people are motivated for positions in power because of their own personal stuff and need for power and control. And so it's real important that we ferret those out and make sure that they're psychologically in a good spot to represent our county, our community, in a healthy way. And I think that could go a long way in alleviating some of the issues that we have. And I don't know anything about the history, too much about the history of the law enforcement here. But if there have been incidents that are related to that kind of behavior, that emotional immaturity stuff, then we need to be addressing that. So whoever's doing the interviewing, I hope they take a look at the questions they're asking and research that part of them. It's just as important as their physical abilities to actually do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. First item is the consent agenda, which consists of tax rule adjustments, counts payable and payroll as presented, approval of public forum agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to pull something from this or have an objection? Hearing none, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We'll move on to action items. Item number one.
RFA 173-20, NCFH AAA lease agreement with Rosie Walter, Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request for action is for a lease agreement for, with the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on aging for one year starting June 1st. It's for additional office space. And what that means is that the computer lab, we were able to look in there and move the computer lab over to another spot and then open up that large space for the computer lab so they can put in cubicles. So it's for an additional 210 extra square feet for a total of 1,371 square foot. And that increases their rent from 275 to 400 per month. And the county councilor has reviewed and approved. Your alternatives for action are you can deny the move or deny any part of the lease, but the staff recommendation is to approve the lease as submitted. The budget impact is it will result in about $1,500 additional revenue.
Questions or comments from commissioners?
Rosie, I take it this includes utilities?
Yes. It does.
So it's 400 a month in utilities paid for 1,370 square feet?
Further questions, comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the lease agreement with North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on aging as presented by staff.
Second motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 173-20, North Central Kansas, Flint Hills Area Agency on aging. Any further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number two.
RFA 174-20, bid award for a 3/4-ton crew fuel truck with Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a little bit of history before I get into this RFA. On April 21st, we had an accident out at Road and Bridge. This pickup here, this 2004 F-250, was pulling a trailer with a small Bobcat on it. And it ended up in a rollover accident. Fortunately, the employee was, had minor injuries. So there was, he was taken to the emergency and released. So this is a RFA to replace this truck. The trailer has already been replaced. The Bobcat is currently being repaired at Bobcat of Salina. And this just shows the two of these other types of vehicles that we currently have. And this is the trailer that has been replaced. So that kind of shows you the need for the vehicle and why we're asking this. And this is a request to award the bid of a crew fuel truck that was damaged in a rollover accident. The department has three of these trucks, one for each crew. They are used to haul fuel and small equipment to the job sites. Due to the DOT regulations regarding tank trucks, hazardous material endorsements, and spill containment issues, we use small trucks to haul fuel to the equipment. The trucks also provide flagger stations and pilot cars for those operations that require them. They are also used to provide real-time road conditions and situations that arise during emergencies, such as floods and snow events. We did receive five bids. Midway Motors from McPherson, Kansas, bid a Ford F-250. They bid two trucks. Bid one was $26,427, and bid two was $27,267. Laird Knoller Ford of Topeka, Kansas, bid a Ford F-250. Their bid was $26,468.53. Shawnee Mission Ford, Shawnee, Kansas, bid a Ford F-250. Their bid was $26,799. Marshall Motors Salina, Kansas, also bid a Ram 2500. Their bid was $28,466. Long MacArthur Ford bid an F-250. They also had bid two trucks. One bid was $28,310.53. The other one was $29,149.57. The alternative for action would be to accept the low bid, reject all bids and rebid, or direct staff towards an alternative. Staff recommends accepting the low bid of $26,427 from Midway Motors. The vehicle will replace a 2005 Ford Model F-250 that was damaged in an accident. Due to the age of the vehicle, it had only liability insurance. Three of these vehicles were purchased in the same year. We propose buying a new one now so as not to hit the yearly budget so hard that at the time the other two will be needing replaced. This has been reflected in the equipment improvement plan to start replacing them within a few years or shortly. The budget impact, the dollars would come out of our Road and Bridge Special Machinery account since this is a non-budgeted purchase. It has a balance of $1,861,164.19, and that would leave an ending balance of $1,834,737.19.
All right, questions or comments from commissioners?
Yes, Darren. What are the differences between the bid one and bid two?
I believe the bid two had a rear defrost window package that would require more equipment. We decided that we didn't need a rear defrost.
And are these four-wheel drive?
They are not four-wheel drive. They are two-wheel drive.
And I just want to say, I mean, up above when we're looking at that, is there a reason why we do not go after four-wheel drive pickups on these? I mean, because if we're looking at it real-time road conditions and situations, is there a time when a four-wheel drive would be beneficial to have during these flood times or other road conditions that we need to be there?
They are, but in weighing the cost benefit, you know, if the road's that bad, you can see that you really shouldn't go down it. So I don't really see the need in spending those extra dollars for a four-wheel drive just to need it once every two or three years.
Gotcha. Okay.
One quick question, Darren. You're calling this a crew fuel truck. Are these crew cabs or are they?
They are not. They are the fuel trucks that the crews use. They haul small equipment. They have a fuel tank in the back, which is, I believe, less than 50 gallons so we can, don't have to have a hazmat endorsement or a spill containment plan. But the crews do use them. They aren't a crew truck. They are just a truck that the crews use.
Further questions from commissioners, comments? I've got a couple, three here, Darren. Number one, how long ago did we bid this?
We bid this just a month or so ago. We opened bids on June 2nd, so the bid would have went out probably May 2nd.
The accident that happened with the other truck, I have to assume that that was caused by a fishtailing situation where that truck was probably pulling too big a load for that truck?
Yes.
That having been said, why, is it feasible to consider moving that level of vehicle up to a one-ton truck, a one-ton duly? I know those cost more, but, I mean, you know, why would we not go for safety and so forth?
There was an investigation to this accident, and there were several missed steps that were involved in that, and those have been addressed. Part of the address of this was they were not supposed to be using that vehicle to pull that piece of equipment. Prior this year, the commission approved the purchase of a single-axle dump truck. That was part of that purchase was to get a single-axle dump truck so we could pull these equipment. And so I don't see the need to go to a one-ton either if we have, we have already put things in place to address this, which is that single-axle dump truck.
I would like to ask that you still investigate the cost of a one-ton.
I will.
I'm not going to get in the way of this one, but to see what the difference is. Because if you've got one truck that's designated to pull equipment, and you've got four crews, and maybe two crews need to be pulling something at the same time, that's probably led a little bit to this one, if I'm just guessing and reading between the lines, that, you know, they needed to get moving and they did it. And so I would like to know the difference and see where we stand on that. So any other comments from commissioners?
And thank you. That brought up a question that I hadn't thought of, is was that truck that was involved in that, was that a half-ton?
3/4-ton.
Oh, that was a 3/4-ton also?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any public comments regarding this purchase? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for a crew fuel truck to Midway Motors in the amount of $26,427.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 174-20, bid award for a 3/4-ton crew fuel truck. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries unanimously. We'll move to item number three.
RFA 175-20, memorandum of agreement for engineering intern with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request for action to discuss and approve the business memorandum of agreement between Saline County and Fort Hays State University. The engineering office was selected to host a Fort Hays State University student intern for the summer of 2020. This intern will be paid through the Fort Hays State University and the Dane G. Hanson Internship Program. The summer intern started working in the engineering office on June 4th, 2020, and some of his duties involve CAD work updating Road and Bridge maps, collecting data to update our asset management software called Cartograph, traffic counts, and just a miscellaneous design aid. There's two alternatives for this action. The first one is to sign the MOA and allow the intern to continue working in my office or to not sign the agreement and thus we'd have to terminate the intern. The staff recommends to sign the agreement with Fort Hays State University. As far as the budget impact, Saline County will pay $500 towards the student wages for the internship, and FHSU will pay the remaining wages to the student.
Comments or commissioners from the commissioners, questions?
Well, I just want to say it was kind of interesting when I read that, that it's like you're coming to us after the fact that it's already been in place and now we're going to go, hey, can we have this?
Yeah.
But I understand there's things that happened.
Kind of what happened with, yeah, the COVID pandemic and kind of threw a wrinkle in this. And then we weren't sure if the intern was going to come because he couldn't find housing. And then all of a sudden, he found housing, you know, very quickly, said, okay, here's, I'm going to start this date. And then he started working, and then everybody kind of realized, oh, you know, we didn't finish the paperwork. So that's kind of the reasoning behind this after the fact.
Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Firstly, I appreciate these internship opportunities. I think it gives them a chance to look at our county, and we get a chance to look at prospective employees down the road and such. So it's quite a, quite a good tool to be used in that way, and I'm all for it.
Other comments? I see two positives in this, Justin. Number one is $500 for an employee for the summer. And number two is to help a young person figure out if they really like this field or not, and it helps see anything we can do to help the educational process and the universities is a positive, too. So I, too, am in favor of this. Are there any public comments regarding the RFA? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Fort Hays State University Dane G. Hanson Student and Internship Business Memorandum of Agreement.
And I'll second the motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 175-20, memorandum of agreement for engineering intern with Fort Hays State University. Any other comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries. That brings us to the end of the action items for today. We will now move to informational items with item number one.
FEMA Alternative Procedures Pilot Program for Permanent Work with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning again, Justin.
Good morning. So this here, I'd like to discuss the alternate projects list regarding the FEMA program, Alternative Procedures Pilot Program for Permanent Work. And this is regarding Section 428 of the Stafford Act. So the Road and Bridge Department has been working with the Kansas Department of Emergency Management, KDIM, and FEMA regarding the declared flood disaster in 2019. Engineering is focused on our attention on just three sites that received severe bank erosion, which also affected the county road. Those sites are located at Cunningham Road, south of Stimmel Road, Stimmel Road, west of Gypson Valley Road, and Gypson Valley Road, north of Crawford Street. With KDIM and FEMA's guidance, it was determined that the FEMA program, Alternative Procedures Pilot Program for Permanent Work, would provide the most benefit to Saline County. And a summary of the program is, I'll just step through a couple of the highlights on that. But it awards the permanent projects based on a fixed cost estimate. The fixed cost estimates may include the repair to pre-disaster conditions and the cost of effective mitigation measures. When the fixed cost estimate is approved by FEMA, any construction costs over the fixed cost amount is the county's responsibility. It's only allowed on construction projects that have not begun and is classified as large projects. According to the Public Assistance Program and Policy Guide, referred to as the PAPPG, FEMA's manual for declared disasters, Saline County may determine that the public welfare is not best served by restoring the function of the damaged facility. And we may request approval from FEMA to apply public assistance funding towards a different project. Therefore, instead of using the fixed cost estimate funds to repair the damaged bank, the channel bank and road, Saline County may use those funds on alternative projects. The fixed cost estimate to repair and mitigate the three project locations shown above is Now, let me be clear that this estimate has not been officially approved by FEMA. However, we're at a point where we need to define the alternative projects list that goes with this application, and that list has to be defined. And so I've identified six projects, alternative projects, or alternate projects to go along with this. Okay, the first, well, the first three are actually at the three sites where we have the channel bank and roadway embankment erosion. And so those three, we'd be realigning the road around the channel erosion. And then the fourth one would be Kingman Road, west of Gypson Creek, and this would be a road grading and servicing project. The fifth project would be a Gypson Valley Road, north of K-4 Highway, and this also would be a grading and a servicing project. And then the final one is on Fallen Road, east of Burma, where we have some significant flooding issues over the road. We'd like to replace that bridge and bring that road up to a higher level of service. You should have in your packet a summary of the fixed cost estimates as well as the alternate projects. And really what I'm asking for is just a consensus of the board to allow me to proceed with the recommended list or a modified list, if you so choose, to proceed with the application of the fixed cost estimates. So you should also have a map, I think, in your packet of the six locations, as well as some pictures and some of my cost estimates that I put together. And it's kind of a difficult program to understand. Typically, on a FEMA project, you have a damaged facility, okay? And then FEMA will pay to fix that facility, okay? And most of the facilities for Road and Bridge would, of course, be roads and bridges. Typically, what they do is they pay only for the cost of the repair. So it's a reimbursement program, you know, and they don't pay any more or any less than a repair. What this program does is it allows you to determine those fixed costs, or, you know, the cost to repair the facility as well as to mitigate it. And then take those funds and you can, you can use those funds instead of repairing that facility, go do something else that better serves your county. And that's what we're doing.
Are there questions or comments from commissioners?
Because it doesn't really make sense to, if it was washed out, it's going to get washed out again. So if you don't realign it, I mean, it makes sense to realign it. Is that what you're saying? Do something better? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, what we're trying to do, what we're wanting to do is something that's more cost-effective. Because my fixed cost, okay, for the three sites is to, yeah, fix the channel and fix the road, the road erosion, and then to mitigate it. And it's the mitigation cost that adds a lot of dollars to make And it's the mitigation cost that adds a lot of dollars to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Right.
But we're allowed to combine those two costs, the repair and the mitigation cost, towards that fixed cost.
And that's appropriate, I think, is, you know, why just fix what happened?
Right.
And then it's going to happen again, so, great. And then I assume that the part of this cost is going to be in land acquisition?
Yes.
When you have to?
Yes.
Okay.
Couple of questions, Justin. So if approved, you're looking at a budget of 1.2 million, and you would like to do these five, five?
Six projects.
Six projects.
Yes.
And some of these, a road, or a bridge replacement and, and two surfacing, that just doesn't seem like much budget to get those six projects done. You think they can be done for that?
I do, I do. I mean, the, the, the first three projects are you're reconstructing a gravel road. So there's not a lot, you're going to use the materials that are there to reshape the new road, you know, and, and to add, add a base, base to it. And so, you know, tho, those should be pretty simple projects. The, the two surfacing projects by Gypson, north and northeast of Gypson, there, there's not a lot of grading to do those. I mean, there'll be some grading, you know, a little bit of widening, but we're not, the, the purpose of grading and surfacing those two roads is not to make the road wider. Okay, those are two locations that receive significant flooding damage, you know, quite often. And really, the, the surfacing of those roads, or really, we're just trying to armor the road so we don't lose it during a flood event. You know, so there's going to be a little bit of grading, a little bit of base rock, you know, and some asphalt on that. But I'm, I'm confident that my numbers here should be appropriate.
And my second question, the realignment on the other projects, is that just buying you time? I mean, 30 years is, is, is the river going to start encroaching on, on this?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you're, yeah, you're absolutely buying time. You know, and the further away you move the road, the more time you buy. And that's, you are very correct. You know, but I'm hoping to buy 30, 40 years. You know, part of this process is we have to define a, oh, a recurrence interval. And really what that means is I had to try to calculate, as the best of my abilities, the rate of the erosion, you know, so it's feet per year. You know, and so I can kind of use that rates that I've, I've calculated the best that I can, you know, to, in order to, to establish how far away I want to move that road.
Well, I, I did visit the Kingman area during the flooding, and I, and I know that Darren and his crews were out there numerous times, and a lot of money and time was spent, and then done again and again as the flooding continued. So I totally concur that that, that project needs to have some type of armor put on the road.
Ironically, five of these six projects are in District 2, which is the district that I represent. I will say this about the, the three that are needing realignment. I have visited those sites, and without question, I mean, they are right up against the road. And in two of the three, I know that, or, yeah, that, and possibly even the third one, I don't know for sure, but there are school bus routes. And I mean, the erosion is right up to the road. And they have, we have barricades up there that take us away from that right now. And, and being somewhat familiar with the New Cambria area and so forth, those, the erosion has, that's taken place so far has been over 100 years or more. And to move it, I don't know what your footage is here, but I saw the maps. It looks to me like you're moving them out quite a ways. I think the buying time is, is appropriate, but it's a significant amount of time. I don't think it'll be in any of our lifetimes that you would ever see something like this, need to be realigned again with those particular projects. They happen to be at steep turns in the, in the riverbed for all three of them. So, any rate, glad you're, you're being proactive here. I like the fact that we're getting FEMA involved. It's too bad it takes so long to get your money from FEMA. But I appreciate very much the, the updates, and I will certainly get ahold of some people that have, that have been raising questions about what are we doing about those, those projects, so. And it's a long time in coming, so, thank you.
Justin, are there other players involved in this, these projects, like Core, Soil Conservation?
Oh, yeah, once, yeah, they'll, they'll definitely be, once we, if we get approved and we move forward with these projects, you have, you'll have your regular permitting agency, regulatory agencies involved with this, and a lot of it being the Core. Well, now that we're not in the channel, we're moving the, the road. It, it kind of depends with the Core, as long as you, you're not in the, you're not, you're not dealing with what they call the ordinary high water of a, of a, of a channel. They really shouldn't be affected any. The, the biggest one will be KDHE, and that's just your, your stormwater erosion plan, you know, on that, so. But we'll, we'll get whichever ones are appropriate to, to get involved with, once we start designing the projects.
Good luck with it.
All right, thank you for the update. Unless there are any further questions, we'll move on to item number two.
2021 Draft Budget Presentation.
All right, Mr. Smith Haynes, you are available.
I am available. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. Before the commission today is presentation of the recommended budget from the county administrator for 2021. Just a recap for folks who may not be as familiar with the budget processes. I know the five of you are. We are required to adopt a budget for the succeeding calendar year and have that to the county clerk no later than August 25th of each year. In order to meet that schedule, we typically need to have the budget adopted by August 15th. It must be published 10 days before that, which is around the 1st of August. And then there are many months of preparation that go into meeting that schedule. So departments have been working on their budgets for some time. And your commission first got a look at what the departments requested for their operating budgets and their technology improvement budgets on May 27th. And then last Tuesday, got a look at the capital improvement requests, as well as the equipment improvement requests. Today, I've combined all of that information from those requests and taken a look at that and presented my recommendations to you. Not asking for any action from the commission today. This is just informational at this point, would come back in July for decisions. So this recommendation has been distributed to our department heads and elected officials. I've requested that they notify me by this Friday if they don't agree with my recommendations. And if we receive any protests, we will schedule a special meeting of your commission on July 1 to hear those appeals. If no protests are received, we will be back on July 7th at your regular meeting. The budget as proposed is about $2.4 million higher in total than the budget for 2020. The majority of that increase is related to increased spending on capital improvements. There is no proposed increase in the mill levy. That is the property tax that is levied. Actually, based on the delinquency rates, I was working with a bit of a higher delinquency rate. And once I received final numbers from the clerk last week, the mill levy may actually come down just slightly, based on those lower delinquency rates. So that is where we are. We'll say the budget as proposed does include a 1% adjustment in employee wages for next year, as well as a total of 10 new positions. And I would be happy to answer additional questions. And like I said, give you all, as well as our department heads and elected officials, some time to look at this and be back in July for action.
I guess I'm confused a little bit. If there is a $2 million increase in the budget, how can there not be an increase in the mill levy? And where, where's, where's the revenue stream at in terms of, what level, level of revenue are we looking at? Are we looking at, I haven't seen that in here, I'm sure it's here, but what is the level of increase of our revenue? And how can that be if we're looking at a sales tax probably decrease in the funds that we receive there? How, how does that work?
The answer is in the amount of carryover cash. So the way budgets are constructed in the state of Kansas is you take the amount of cash that you come into the year with, and then you add your non-property tax revenue sources, and then subtract your expenditures to get to a property tax mill levy. And we are coming into 2021, even the most conservatively I can estimate, our sales tax being down, our highway tax being down. We are going to come into 2021 with about $2 million more than what we projected to come into 2020 with. And that's, that's your difference right there. The way that the, that Saline County budgets for capital improvement projects is that we budget the full amount of what we have available in each of those funds so that those are available to be spent if we need them, rather than just a single year's projected expenditures. And so as the balances in those funds grow, that amount that we're budgeting each year grows. But that's an amount that we have transferred into those funds in prior years, and does not affect the mill levy in that year.
Okay, spending that money then doesn't affect our, our need for the reserves that are required by the, or supposedly required by the state, or recommended, I should say. It will not affect that level, will still be above that level as far as our reserves go?
Yeah, absolutely. I, we've talked, when we had the audit presentation in front of the commission, I talked a little bit about this, that our financial advisors who are working with us on a potential jail project have said that they recommend that we keep at least 20% of the general fund balance in unencumbered cash. And we have been above 30% for the last several years. I believe that this budget will allow us to maintain that.
You have answered my question, and I appreciate it. And I also want to pat my fellow commissioners and department heads especially, that we're able to operate frugally. We haven't had to furlough people, we haven't had to send anyone home with a 24-hour paycheck. We're, we're able to maintain in Saline County normal operating procedures. I wouldn't mind taking a little bit of a look, though, in the next week or so, about these recommended capital improvement projects to make sure that we, you know, that we really need to look at them that hard. And if we can bring that $2 million increase down, even to $1 million, let's say, or even maybe to the same budget level as 2020, it would behoove us to do so. But I haven't scoured it that closely to, to, to make that recommendation at this point. So I'm hogging the microphone here. Other commissioners wish to speak, please?
My only comment is, again, I want to say publicly how impressed I am with you and your staff and, and the department heads on, on this presentation. And I've been part of these for 14 years now, six with the county. And what you've presented is very readable, understandable, and has been done in a concise manner. So thank you very much.
Questions from other commissioners, comments? Thank you very much.
I would just mention also that the budget is published to our website at saline.org, and it's part of the rotator on the homepage. So if people wish to dive into the numbers, it's right there for the public to see.
And as far as, you know, like I said, if we're going to look at the capital improvement, which is where the, the increase is coming from, what type of a timeframe field are we looking at to be able to accomplish that? And, and will this budget be published as proposed here? This isn't being proposed as yet, is it? Or am I getting ahead of myself, or?
This is my recommendation to the commissioners.
Okay, all right.
We will publish then, once you all have your say in July, we will publish the budget.
There we go.
As legally required, and have a formal public hearing. That will be scheduled for August 11th, to meet that timeline that I talked about earlier. So we'll need to have commissioners' comments. In order to, to publish all of that, we'll need to, commissioners' comments finalized by July 21st.
As far as your recommendation to us then, if we do have some recommendations, when would you like to hear those for your ability to, to continue this process? How soon do you want to hear from us what we'd like to approve or disapprove or chop from the budget? How, how soon would you like to have that?
Well, I'd be happy to talk with you individually at any time. But as I said earlier, July 7th is the date that I'm targeting to be back here for the five of you to make votes on whether you agree or don't agree with me, so.
So my thought process, and maybe, and I'm going to make sure that the other commissioners are okay with this, but maybe in a couple of weeks, if we were to, to rediscuss this just a little bit, as far as commissioner recommendations, is that appropriate? Does everyone want to do that or not do that?
That gives me enough time to look through this.
I would agree. With me, anyway, but I haven't heard from three others.
No, I, there, there's a lot to take in here. So I want to dig through it. I'm sure I'm going to have a lot of questions for you. And we can do that on a one, one-to-one basis, and then get together collectively and as a group.
And I want to echo Commissioner Shadwick's comments that even for someone like me, that I can understand this. I can read the numbers and compare and, and make a logical judgment. So, Mr. White, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll, we'll probably put this on the agenda then for a couple of weeks.
Yep.
And we'll go from there.
Absolutely.
And I hope this is sending a good, positive message to the, not only to the citizens, but to our employees and everyone. The Saline County's in pretty good shape at this point. All right, we'll move to item number three.
County Administrator's Update.
So, thank you, commissioners. While we are talking about money, just a couple of items to continue on that theme. First, industrial revenue bonds. Last week, there was a presentation from the Salina Community Economic Development Organization. And the commissioners requested some additional information. So I've distributed to each of you this morning a memo with some background on industrial revenue bonds. Encourage you to take a look at that and ask me any questions, and we can discuss that again next week. The other thing is, I mentioned previously that the SPARC, which is the governor's reopening task force, had made a recommendation for counties to receive some of the CARES Act relief funding that this was awarded to the state of Kansas. They are making that presentation to the State Finance Committee, Finance Council, excuse me, this afternoon at 3:30 PM. So we expect to hear something after that. We still have not received the draft resolution that they're requesting commissioners to adopt. We've been promised that for a week running here. So I'm hopeful that they may release it yet this week, and we would try and get it on your agenda for next Tuesday.
Phil, I got caught in the middle of a, a radio thing this morning on the news, and I didn't hear the first part of it, but it sounded like that Saline County had been awarded some funds from the federal government. I thought it was around $100,000 on this distribution. That was just this morning. Is, am I, you're obviously not aware of something?
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about specifically. We did receive $58,008. We did receive $58,008 through the Department of Justice. The Sheriff's Office was here and presented that to you all about a month ago. We applied for some funding through another piece of the CARES Act through CDBG. We were not awarded that funding, but the state has requested an additional pot for that, so we may still be in line for that in the future. The funding that, that we're talking about with this is based on $194 per person, so that is $8 to $10 million that would be coming to Saline County based on our population. That is not all for the county as an organization, that's for the county as a community. There's an expectation that we would pass that along to cities, school districts, et cetera. But, you know, like I said, that, that will be taken up this afternoon.
I will check back with Todd Pittinger and ask him what I, the part of it that I didn't hear and see what, because I may have misinterpreted it altogether. So, you know, that brings me to another point that I don't know that everyone knows, but I think the federal government initially awarded the state of Kansas $500 million to be distributed throughout the counties and it went to, the total amount went to Johnson and Sedgwick Counties.
It was actually 1.25 billion that the federal government awarded. And Johnson County, I know, they got 116 million of that. I forget the number for Sedgwick County, but it was around the same amount. So, the state had a net of just over a cool billion. And they've divided that into three phases. The first phase was 400 million that they're planning to award out to the counties. And then the second phase, they're going to do more community-based things.
Okay, very interesting.
Chairman Vidrickson. I don't know if part of that 100,000 that you were, that he was speaking about was in regards to our HAVA money that we received from the Secretary of State's office. Saline County was awarded a little over 51,000 for me to hand, do the elections with, in regards to the pandemic, so, which is part of what paid for our ballot boxes out front and stuff, so.
Hearing lies part of the problem and you only hear part of the conversation. You know, I didn't hear the entire newscast, so that's where I kind of got off, off-center there, so.
Well, and, and there are a number of federal, the federal government made a real effort to get funding out to communities and there are a number of different programs. It's sort of hard to keep track of them all, so.
Okay. Well, again, thanks for your efforts in that regard, so. Are we, that's the end of the Commissioners' update?
That's all I have for today.
We'll move to item number four.
Commissioners' comments.
Anyone have anything?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
And if you went over this last week, I apologize since I wasn't here, but as a part of the CBDG grants that we did not get, and I want to preface this by I'm not pointing fingers or blaming anybody why we didn't get it, but I do have a little bit of a problem that the only answer that I seem to be getting from the city is that the application just wasn't put in on time. And that just doesn't make sense to me when 60-some other counties did get money and we potentially lost out on 3, $400,000. So, you have anything for me of why it was sent in late? And, and again, I'm not saying that it was your fault or anybody's fault, but where's the problem and how can we make sure, first of all, that this doesn't happen again? Because we've got little, little counties getting $200,000 that have a one-person shop that obviously met the deadline on time. Why wasn't the city, why couldn't the city get it in on time? If you can shed any light, I would appreciate it. No, the city. The city handled our thing, from what I understand.
I think he has an answer for you, so.
Okay. Well, actually, the city didn't have anything to do with our application.
Right, okay.
Both the city of Salina and Saline County worked through North Central Kansas Planning.
Okay.
And they, so, first of all, I will say, I think we turned this around very quickly. We found out that this money was announced by the state on May 11th. We met with folks here in the community, the city, the county, the Chamber of Commerce met on, I think it was May 13th, and then met with folks from North Central Kansas Planning the following day. We had that information to you all on May 26th that had to be published in the newspaper five days before, because it was a public hearing. So, it was published in the newspaper that intervening week and, and on your agenda on May 26th. The state said, when they made the announcement, it was going to be a first-come, first-served basis, but they didn't have a deadline. They did not publish any sort of deadlines. So, we, we had our public hearing on May 26th. It was submitted to the state on May 28th. So, hearing on Tuesday, submitted to the state on Thursday. We found out a week later that they cut off at 5:00 PM on Wednesday.
Okay, when you say that we submitted it, North Central?
North Central Kansas Planning.
They, they are the ones that submitted it.
They hit the button on Thursday.
Very good, okay. That helps me.
We found out later that the, the state had decided, based on the number of applications they received, to cut off at 5:00 PM on Wednesday. So, if we had had, you know, this is the, the $640,000 question, right? If we had had our application in on Wednesday rather than Thursday, would we have gotten money? My suspicion is if they had gotten a lot more applications on Wednesday, they would have moved their deadline back to Tuesday because they simply had $9 million that they had to divide up around the state. And the 66 communities that were awarded funding, none of those folks were awarded what they applied for. All their, all their applications were reduced. I do share your concern about how some of those smaller communities that don't have daily papers actually met the publication deadline.
Correct, right.
I find that, I mean, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I find that curious that that would have been logistically possible. And I also think that the state, I mean, speaking as a resident of this community rather than a resident of Wallace County, right? I think, I think the state should have applied some sort of a filter to the applications around community need based on size, unemployment rate, other things. I mean, when you talk about some of these extremely small counties that have not been impacted with high unemployment, receiving $132,000, I frankly don't know what they're going to spend it on. And I think we probably could have done a better job of spending it in Salina and Saline County, but.
And the good points, and again, I was just trying to get cleared up, so.
Yes, and again, I will say that the state has requested an additional 7 million. And, you know, knowing that our application was in on Thursday, like, we ought to be first in line for that next 7 million if they, if they get it, so.
And did we have to go through North Central Regional Planning Center? Is that, were they the grant administrators? Was that our decision? Was that, was that the group's decision?
We did not have to go through them. We chose to go through them because they are familiar with the CDBG program and we don't have anybody internally who has done a CDBG. There, I will say, there was also another wrinkle in there around, we got, the state locked us out of the application for a period of time there due to a misunderstanding, but we, we got that all.
Okay. And again, I apologize for misunderstanding that I thought the city was applying on our behalf, but I think my conversation was, based on my memory two months ago, when we were saying, "We're not going to apply for something that the city was going to apply for." It was an extra money for food, for schools, or something like that, is that was?
So, there were two programs through this. There was money for business assistance, which we could apply for up to 300,000. Each community could apply for up to 300,000. And then there was money for meal assistance and we could apply for up to 100,000. So, the city applied for both of those programs. The county only applied for the business assistance, not the meal assistance.
That's right.
Because all of the meal programs are located within the city limits and if we had received both, we, if, if both entities had received awards, we could not spend any of our money within the city limits.
That's, okay. Thanks for clearing that up. Thank you.
Okay. Other announcements? I will say that I stopped this morning at the Health Department simply to say hello and thank you to them and both as a Commissioner and a, and a citizen for their hard work and their diligence and their, you know, they've been up against it for over 90 days now and, and yet they're all still very positive over there about their job and, and so on and so forth. I will say that if you get an opportunity, one of the Commissioners, Justin's center, if you will, I mean, it looks like he's getting ready to launch a missile into space. I mean, there's, it's just like the Command Center in Houston practically, that all the things that he's hooked up to with the, in regards to the COVID and the CDC and so on and so forth. But they're, they're really working hard and, and I want to say a great big public thank you to the, to the Saline County Health Department and everyone who works there. So, are there any other comments to come before the Commissioners?
I have one question and it's, it's been a few weeks since we addressed this when it goes to the Expo lease agreement. I guess you haven't heard anything, that's why we haven't heard anything. I don't know where that's at. It's one thing that I'm looking forward to putting to bed and it didn't seem like our recommendations back on the proposed lease were that earth-shattering that it couldn't have happened expeditiously and so maybe you can visit with the people.
I have and I will again.
Thank you.
We can put it to bed by simply saying, "We're done messing with this." I mean, this, I don't know how long, but you got a good point. I mean, okay, that's, anybody else? I'll take a motion for adjournment, please.
So, moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, moved, the adjournment motion has been approved and motion seconded and all of those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.